Oh, financials, I skipped over.
That's okay.
You have seven warrants in front of you for a total of sixty-one thousand eight hundred seven dollars and sixty-five cents. That means some signatures. I am still trying to monitor and track projections to the end of the year. Been working with payroll on taking a look at those lines in particular. And it seems as though we do have some surpluses in several of the payroll lines that are going to be helpful. There's a couple of, I've done most of the reconciliation to bring lines into balance on page three of the April printout for professional development for teachers. There is a, there's an eleven hundred dollar expense that needs to be reclassified to a different function because of change of charge accounts from the DESI. We have an open purchase order still from the collaborative, so I don't know if there are any more invoices. I'm trying to track that down and see if we can't close that purchase order out. Then I'll move the expenses to the proper line for them. It's just an open purchase order.
It's not in here yet.
It shows as an encumbrance for a thousand dollars under that line.
To the collaborative?
Yep. And it's an open purchase order, so I just need to see whether or not we are anticipating invoices. If not, we'll close it out and, you know, what's up with that. So that I've got to still track down, and then I'll move those expenses into the proper place. Transportation, regular transportation currently shows a deficit amount of four thousand sixty dollars. It's my understanding before I arrived that there was an issue with where transportation was being charged, particularly in the area of special education. So basically, that, all of those moving parts have been taken care of, and the encumbrance in transportation needs to be reduced by this and by that four thousand sixty dollars. Once that encumbrance is reduced, that will take care of that line. So those are the two big things. In-school choice, we have a little bit of deficit in the sped transportation line. Again, part of this whole thing that happened in the fall. So it's been determined that the encumbrance that's in that line can be reduced by a hundred and eighty dollars. So we're looking at three hundred and forty, which is, I don't think, that big a deal. Again, I put together projections, federal projections for you, which is after the financial report. So you can see where each of the areas stand at this particular point in time. Again, we're looking at some savings in salaries in particular that, you know, we're still monitoring, but basically, we've done a sort of paper encumbrance of salaries through to the end of the year. So we're looking in pretty good shape. My recommendation to you would be to think about us for the remainder of the year, trying to offload some school choice into the local budget salary-wise. And give you a little breathing space, because as you know, it will be tight by the end of fiscal twenty. So that would be my recommendation, is that we take anything that we're saving, try and get salaries over the next, there's a payroll going out this week, but for the remainder of the payrolls, getting the salaries into the regular budget, spending this down, so that you have a little more breathing room in school choice.
So how would we make that happen?
I just wave a magic wand. Just tell Judy.
We just say to do it. Because the balances of the two things that, because Chrissy and I have also been talking about, if there is any of your money, whether or not to resurface the gym floor, you know. Is that already been moved forward there? Is that numbers including that?
I haven't figured out the numbers on that, but I talked to Bob Lesko about it.
Okay.
He sort of put it into the greater scheme of the other projects he's got going, and it looks like it's gonna.
Okay, so it's just balancing out, trying to do some maintenance, you know, maintenance projects and also doing the balance, so just.
I just didn't know if, just this discussion, it all means that.
Yeah, you don't have to vote. No, that's can be done, just communicating with you that we're doing that kind of thing. Because I think that's one of the, watching into your money is always twofold. The public wants to know what you're doing with any of your money, and how much, you know, if you have an excess, why do you have an excess? This is not really an excess. This is barely a, you know.
Yeah, this is just changing the stance of salaries.
But people want to know what you're doing with it, and so it's good to talk about it.
At the last meeting, that was the joint meeting, there was a question about a tractor that we signed a warrant for.
Oh, yeah, the warrant that we were gonna sign.
Yeah, did that get correct?
Yeah, so that was sent to, that was the one, the Frontiers mower was sent to the school committees, instead of sent to the towns, so it was a town warrant on FY nineteen budget, and so that got, I believe.
Yeah, I think Mark Turpino.
We're not opposed to contributing, but we want to use it too.
Yeah, right, so no, that was the tractor that came in under budget.
Judy, I just have one question. It looks like there's nothing left in the professional development.
In twenty-three fifty-seven, there shouldn't be, because we had to reclassify everything into twenty-three fifty-six.
Oh, okay, so I'm just looking at the wrong spot.
That's just a change of the charter of accounts.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, we're at zero, then I lost track of something.
No, I had to move everything into the other line.
Custodial services, fourteen thousand dollars savings so far.
What, are we hiring?
It's not, I hired.
You hired someone?
Yeah.
Because we had an open position earlier.
So we were running skinny?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan was working a lot of hours, and then over vacations, Kathy from the cafeteria was helping out. So some of those things that were being neglected because we're shorthanded
Yep.
got taken care of during vacation. So I'm not sure what there is for terms of a surplus.
Well, right here, it says about, a little over fourteen thousand dollars, and salary savings right this minute.
Right, so between not having hired the part-time custodian, plus there's still some money left over in custodial temp services. So that's the current snapshot. Again, that's one of those things where I need to have a conversation with Bob about, is there anything you're anticipating the last two weeks of school, after all the kids are gone, that might bring that number down? But that's the current state of affairs. So again, continue to watch Laura with that.
It sounds like, yeah, the one thing with the check is that, did, I doubt we've encumbered the gym floor into thirty-four thousand.
Not that I know of.
So that thirty-four minus, we were saying nine was the number?
Nine thousand nine hundred.
So let's just say minus ten thousand, so you're looking at twenty-four. So anything else, we will put over to school choice outside of that.
Right, okay.
Right, and is there any other smaller things that, if there's any other small, then we're basically hoping to bring around twenty thousand-ish.
Yeah.
I think it'd probably be fair, maybe getting a little over a thousand to play with for smaller.
Yeah, the only other thing that we had discussed was possibly cafeteria tables, but.
So I look at what your numbers are, and maybe we do that over two years, or you can figure out, depending on what kind of style.
Well, one of the issues is that the tables are not the right size for little friends, so.
Start with the small.
Yes, get a few small tables for the little guys. It's one of the reasons why the pre-k kids don't eat in cafeteria, and I'd like to see them be able to, towards the end of the year, start transitioning into the larger population.
Let's find out, you know, talking, is there?
No, only a few tables.
It's gonna be a couple hundred bucks a table, depending on how you do it. Is it all-in-one system, or if it's gonna be chair system? You've got to think about that too, obviously, because you do community events, and you're gonna have to, if you're gonna have the all-in-one things, they're terrible for community events. But they work great for little guys who can't move bouncing around. So you may have some of those, and those will be, you know, you'll have to figure it out. Enough advice.
Okay, so let's connect on those things over the next week or so, so we can get that taken care of.
All right, I can also share the email that Bob sent, because I had asked, like, how is this gonna work with the gym floor? Where does that fit in?
Okay.
So he'd sort of.
I don't think, no.
Gave me a list of the other things on his, on his list. One of the things he had mentioned was some generator expenses.
Oh, and that haven't paid yet? But that should be part of a different, that's the capital budget.
Maintenance.
Oh, maintenance.
Oh, yearly, you're talking about yearly maintenance, possibly.
Yeah, we built the contract into here, I think, for next year.
Don't know.
We did.
We talked about that.
The nine, over nine thousand for the gym floor, is that to re-sand it, re-line it, go all nine yards?
That's to go the distance with that. And then the thought was, in the following year, we would do the sort of maintenance program of just buffing it away somehow. But it's.
It has a few layers on it.
It does, and it's.
Hasn't been done in.
Very slippery, I hear. So at this point, it's somewhat of a safety issue, kids slipping and sliding all over in there.
Yep.
It's a good time to get it done, early in the summer.
Yep.
Okay, well, good job on the budget, everybody, so it's great. Anything else, any more questions?
Yeah, sorry, I pulled up email, I pulled up Bob's email, and it says, we need to do some preventative maintenance on the new generator, purchase installed, new batteries for the sprinkler system, accelerators, alarm noise, basement. Is that basement, B S M T?
Yes.
And I have been planning to have a new roofer to do the yearly maintenance on the roof. So he's got it all under control in this email, so he's, I'm just reading along the way to say he's really on it.
I can see what he's thinking.
I will forward it to you, so we know about what he's talking about. But he's keeping it all within the budget that we have now. He's not looking for money outside of that.
Yeah, and that surplus in the custodial line has nothing to do with any of the building repairs or anything, but that's just a salary savings, so.
So that's in the lines that are for the budget, maintenance of buildings, you're saying? But there isn't much encumbrance there, so.
Yeah, probably because of the logistics orders haven't been cut yet, so.
Well, hopefully, if it's just been installed and it's been running, that it won't need any maintenance in two thousand nineteen, but possibly next.
Yeah, he wasn't calling the big numbers. He was talking about a three thousand dollar over, left over for after.
Yep.
It's a long email.
Okay.
But I was just only talking about the generators, and that sparked people's ears.
So now it's new business.
Now it's new business. All right, so the first new business is the comprehensive school health service grant. So we applied, Meg Birch, the school nurse leader, and Conley School Nurse, applied for a school health grant. Basically, what that grant was to do is to pay for the nurse leader and have the nurse leader do more, become actually a part-time nurse leader. It's over three years, and then there's an extension and such after that. But really, to try to streamline the way we're doing services, health services in all of the buildings. The amount of health needs of our students has increased dramatically, and not because there's more students with health needs, but I think you have more students with health needs attending public schools and successfully every day without needing additional accommodations. So the amount of diabetics, you know, allergies, those kind of things. And so she applied for this grant, and we received the grant. And I'd hoped tonight to be bringing, this morning rather, to be bringing the grant here for you to approve. However, midweek last week, the numbers for the grant came out, and it's lower than what we asked for. And so there's an error within, we're going back and forth with the state on it. There's an error within how we're regionalized, and our overall need is based on the Frontiers numbers, not on all the elementary numbers. And even though it's clearly, we feel it's clearly stated in there, they're saying it wasn't clearly stated, but.
So in the application?
In the application, and so because we're kind of broken up, and there's multiple numbers, I guess, looking at the wing numbers. So we are currently in conversation with the state of two things. One, can they give us the extra, it's about twenty thousand dollar difference, or maybe slightly under. Will they award us the extra twenty thousand dollars so we can fully roll out what we requested as part of the grant? Or can we modify the grant, because we can't do it for what we set, because we would have to pick up the costs of, a lot of the grant is paying for a substitute, or I want to say a substitute nurse, a hard-time nurse to replace Meg to do this. The reason why it's got to come in from a school committee as well is because after the three years, there is, in order to continue the grant, we have to pick up, you know how they do that. So I want to be very clear what that looks like, or.
Or we'd stop.
Or we'd stop doing it. And so I think by all means, you know, just in the planning of it, that we take the money so we can get that done, create systems in place and that kind of thing, and then we can see where we are. Because we already fund a nurse leader in our budgets and that kind of thing. So we already have that kind of in place. We just didn't, she just didn't have enough time to do, to kind of, I want to say, fix things, but procedures and protocols, and support the other nurses and some professional development that would be good to have. So you're on hold, and so we're gonna have to bring this back next month, and we'll have to do the vote then. Like I said, they were kind of, I'm not sure if they were late within their own timeline of getting out. It's a little late in the year, I think, for grants to be awarded in the sense that we can't adjust our budgets. If we have any, if we accommodate, so it's got to either fit perfectly, or we, the other option is we don't accept it. So we're trying to, you know, right, so we want to, obviously, we want to take money in services that we can get from grants, but same time, so.
So can you explain how it works now with the nurse leader model you said?
Yep, so there's a nurse leader who receives a stipend to oversee all the, there's a lot of paperwork dealing with the state in regards to what we're doing in the school, each, with all the nurses, and from amusations to, you know, tracking all the different kind of things coming down. She also works as the leader for professional development, making sure the nurses are up to date on all those games and any. You know, anytime we get, you know, for example, recently, we've had the, you know, a certain amount of talk in the news regarding where amusations are, and you know, that kind of stuff, and measles and that kind of thing, and where we are with all our schools, who's tracking that.
So Meg is the nurse leader?
Meg is the nurse leader.
And is it just for the elementary schools?
No, middle, so it's for the whole.
The whole region?
So, yeah, so it comes from the, it comes out of the central office expenses.
But she's also the nurse at Conley.
She's also the nurse at Conley, so these are, so she gets a stipend to do work. So she stays, stays late. It's a very, it's a very busy job. A lot of the small things that I'm happy she takes care of, so that, I'm not having to do it, but, you know, and I can have her explain that. She probably will come to the, ask her if she can make a special meeting with this in the morning to kind of go through that.
And can you send it ahead of time?
Yep.
When you're planning to get us to hold on to that? Non-union salary.
So I would, I would ask two things. One, that we move that to the end, and then we go to executive discussion, executive session to discuss that.
Okay.
The fact that we are in open negotiations with another, with our unions, I think that affects our non-union, which is a conversation that.
That hasn't finished, the negotiations are done?
So, and we have, we can talk about that as well, because that is also, we have both executive sessions listed, so I would imagine that'd be appropriate for those things.
Okay. So then I added an item to start talking about a long-term planning committee, because we had discussed with the finance committee, you know, sort of making sure that we're keeping an eye on where we at the elementary is going, how we're gonna get there, what the impact's gonna be on the budget for the town, so that we can be thinking, you know, years ahead, instead of just every year to them.
Are you thinking just about the physical plant, or are you talking about the academic?
No, about the program and the school, and just how do we, again, maintain a thriving elementary school lately? Given that they're, you know, being quite supportive right now, so we want to make sure that we're able to capitalize on that. So now I'll let them know what our long-term. Yeah, and include the town and the finance committee ideally in most discussions at some point, so that they can be aware of where we're heading. So I don't know, typically, there's like the strategic plan that, like, the district would have, and then our school would line up with that. So I just wanted to start talking about how we might incorporate this. We talked about maybe in the summertime, getting something going, to the extent that some people are around in the summer. I'd really like to involve parents in that, those conversations. And we also have the school council that we're supposed to have. So I don't know if we could maybe combine, being that we're a small school, maybe just combine the duties of the school council to be part of the long-range planning committee, so that, you know, we kind of kill two birds with one stone in that way. But it seems like now's a good time to start thinking about that and get organized before spring. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to think about that. I can come up with something if people want. But I want to line up with whatever you're doing, also.
Yeah, so that's kind of an all-encompassing long-term planning committee, in the sense of we're long-term planning in so many of our different committees.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, and there's got to be a better, financial long-term planning is something that has not been, you know, talked about in that.
Right.
Pulled out.
It all needs to dissect down to money at the end.
Right, we're gonna be modifying the strategic plan this summer. It's on administrative team agenda to do that, and so that can, you know, those are gonna be some, those are gonna be really general. I mean, schools have to, will then adapt as part of their school improvement plans to fit into that. They're, usually, the strategic plan is general enough where there's a lot of flexibility to do that. That's what we were able to run off of last year's, or two years ago when Dr. Carey put one together. It was general enough for us to keep going with it, and we were able to modify within it. So I guess I'm just looking for more, because I agree that we need to do more, certainly, capital long-term planning has to be more. It exists, but it's not been transparent to even this committee.
Right.
And Bob has that, has a list of all the things he's knocking off.
Got better.
Thing, but, you know, and you'll see, I'm like, so it tends to us, Bob is retiring. And, you know, a new person onboarding, a new person, making that a priority for all the, I think, for all the schools is going to be, I think everybody wants to see this more transparent, three-year to five-year plans on all fiscal needs. Not fiscal needs, facility needs. The other.
But we do do something like that now, we do have.
It exists, it exists.
It's not very formalized.
The one to three, the three to five, the color codes, and what's the priority, what's been put, you know, that we're looking ten years down the road, or seven years down the road, or five years. I mean, we do have.
We've started.
I think, you know, we've had that for a while. I'm not sure if there's other parts of, of, if you're talking about people in general, and different positions through central offices, if that's what you're talking about. But I think facility-wise, you know, like, you know, like, we have a plan, like, this year to do the carpet, rest of the carpets and the things. I mean, that was part of that.
Not the rest, not the rest of the carpets. Love to do the rest.
I do, but I think.
No, we have, there is a plan, it's just that it isn't really in a format that can be shared easily with other people and monitored easily. So I think what we, what my goal would be is to get that into some sort of more formalized version that could even live on the web, and that we could easily, we, this committee, or the town, or whoever wants to view it, could say, oh, here's what's going on at the school this year, or here's what should be going on at the school this year.
And I agree.
And I think that's what we're striving for.
We have the information, and I would say.
Bob's done the homework of like, what needs to happen when, which is great. That was the first step.
Right, if you brought something up now, I should be able to click three or four buttons, and be able to say, oh, yeah, right here, next year we'll be doing this, and I don't have that ability, so I would agree. That's part of it. But I think hearing what the select board had said is, what is the vision of the school five years and ten years from now? That's a whole different kind of long-term planning in the sense of, and I'm not sure.
It's more programmatic.
I'm not sure where it goes, though, because.
Well, I think we need to have a vision of where the school, where we want the school to be, and how do we want to differentiate lately elementary, and how do we keep attracting either people to move to town or school choice?
That does sound like the kind of things that are in the school improvement plan.
Yeah, and again, I don't want to proliferate plans, because that doesn't do anybody any good. But I do want to keep us focused on at least defining where we're heading and how we think we'll get there. And that's partly the strategic plan, so I think if you guys do your plan, then we should certainly line up with whatever the district is doing.
Yep.
But I also want to make sure we incorporate the voices of the town, so that people feel part of it. So it's partly an exercise to get people included, and then it's partly to have somewhere to be focused on, and then monitoring, like, are we getting more students? Are we not getting more students? Are the students doing better? Are they, you know, the typical things that you would monitor. I think it's a nice way to kind of keep everything together and keep us all focused.
On the educational part of things, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, the state dictates, you know, like NCAS, and how we teach our kids for NCAS and stuff. I mean, how do you, how do, you know, every town, unless you're a charter school, every town basically has the same way you have to teach your kids how NCAS goes.
No.
Well.
I would disagree.
There's lots of different ways.
We have to make sure we cover the curriculum standards, those are the same for everyone in Massachusetts. But how we get there is very different from one school to another.
And I agree there, but I'm just saying, but they do dictate.
Well, it's all a starting point.
Yeah.
And that's, I guess, my point is, we want to be, we want to differentiate from all the other schools potentially, and make it even better. Like, some schools will do the minimum, the goal is not to do the minimum here, the goal is to do much more than the minimum.
Good idea.
And.
So, next step on this would be to lay out, what does it look like? What does the group look like, or, you know, and what is the early?
Yeah, I think maybe recruiting, before the summer, I'd like to recruit some parents to participate in that, because otherwise, I think it'll be hard to get anybody.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
And maybe for next meeting, we could lay out more what the final product would look like, so we know what we're working towards. And I'm happy to sort of lay out something for you guys, kind of work with you guys to do that. And it's really just about focusing our vision and what we want to be accomplishing, I think.
Maybe it's like power of minds, you get the PTO, you get the student council, you know, those people together, maybe have like, have a powwow.
I want to hear what everybody loves about the school, and what they want to improve about the school, and then try and put it all together.
I mean, that's maybe to have like a, what do they call the big conferences that they have, a forum on, you know, how to make our school even better than what it is.
Right, I mean, we fought hard to keep Cindy, so let's think about how does that position really help, you know, improve our school, which it does, and we all believe that, but let's make sure we're clear on how that's working.
All right.
So that's my goal.
We will put that, we'll try to get an outline going of that, so that.
So we can start recruiting people after next meeting?
We can certainly start, you know, you can start recruiting on the other side, saying, will you be interested if we put this together?
Yeah.
And let them know the details.
And again, I would try and line it up with the school council, I don't know what Maureen thinks, but just because we're such a small community, it's very hard to.
Get volunteers.
Get volunteers, so to the extent that we can kind of have the school council be our body that's gonna be informing this, and they have to inform the school improvement plan anyway, and that should line up with this. So to me, that's kind of the best way to go.
Sounds logical.
And then, I know, I think I ask this every year, but I'm just curious what the evaluation process is for you guys.
Me too.
So.
You're in trouble.
Okay, so like, here's my little spiel, is everybody has things they can improve on, right? And if you don't talk about it, then it doesn't necessarily get addressed. There's always great things to also, you want to acknowledge and recognize, so.
So Principal Curtin gets evaluated by me, and so I have to follow the DESI rubrics to do that. And it's actually on our agenda on Thursday, principal's meeting to go through how that's gonna work, but. Basically, so that will all be, that's, will be done there.
And do you get input from other people, or how does that work?
No, it's not done through surveys and such. That's kind of, you know, that's, you know, it's done through, there's a list of whole thing of standards, and it's very similar to the superintendent.
Yeah, I guess my point is, it's also good to get other perspectives.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you're not just facing it on your own.
Right, but my perspective has. Right, but my perspective has a lot.
Yours is important, yes.
Right, but mine has a lot of other people's perspectives and feedback from staff and feedback, you know, just from hearing, so.
I'll make a few for parents again, to try and incorporate parents' perspectives where possible.
Because I'm also looking at her.
There's a community piece of the rubber.
There is, there is, and for, you know. I'm trying to, it goes down, so how do you get feedback and that kind of thing?
I know, it's tricky.
And so, but yeah, so that's how that's working. The superintendent one.
Do I get three years?
No.
They should have.
We do, we do his.
So.
Yeah, but we need feedback.
So, this is what, you know, so the superintendent's evaluation is, I don't know if anybody's, I can send you the link for this. I didn't make copies of this thing, it's from MASC.
Yeah, you can find all our, the teacher ones.
It's all there.
It's all like organized.
On the school website or on DESI?
Oh, gosh, so basically.
So, you have to do the DESI process?
So, DESI gives you the, the outline of the overview and what has to go into the state. How you get there is both negotiated into contracts and figured out by each committee, but you still have to look at the standards, and those have to be, you know, put within, within evaluation. The evaluation is extremely time-consuming. And so, they even estimate it takes 10 hours a week of applying within this. And so, I didn't go, being an interim, I didn't even look at this.
Okay.
Although part of my, me superintendent thing, I was doing that, but however, we talked about it. However, I didn't completely dive in because I was dealing with a lot of other things, it's been busy. So, I currently am trying to figure out what I can send out to school committee members where they can fill out very easily, I can give this to you.
Yeah, we did this for Lema, huh?
Correct, and the issue we had was, it's, the process is so cumbersome because there are so many indicators, there's 64 indicators.
Yeah, it's a big thing.
And so, and 24 standards, and, did you look at anyone?
Judy, she needs your help.
Yeah, Judy.
No, no, but I was just saying in the sense of, well, you looked at it in the sense of 24, but so there's a lot.
Yeah, there's a ton.
And I, I know that the school committee was frustrated through the last time we did this because they're like, well, how are we supposed to know all this stuff?
And you're not.
And you're not. And the actual participation rate of school committee was below.
I know, I was one of the few.
And so, there was, you know, literally out of the 25, because you have to remember, I have 25 bosses. And so, we have to make a system that allows people to get voice, but in a system that can be crowd. And.
What's the chair's job?
It, and the question is, do the chairs get together to create an evaluation system? Not create a system, but.
Yeah.
How it's going to be done, and so on and so forth. I can just send you the link.
Legally, you can do this electronically, so you could put some sort of whatever that would gather the data. You have to do this in open session.
The evaluation.
Evaluation itself.
Yeah.
With the superintendent, you can thank the Wayland School Committee for that.
So, you have to sit here while they?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's public.
Yeah.
It's a staff.
And all the documents, and all the documents.
There's ways to do it that aren't, like, that are constructive.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, I feel like we just want to take advantage of having the opportunity to talk about things.
How many questions are there now?
Overburden everybody.
It's basically, you would rank on all of the sub-standards and then give a rank of exemplary, proficient.
Needs improvement or unsatisfactory.
Needs improvement, unsatisfactory, on each of the four major standards. And then, give an overall ranking from there. So, you can't do this offline, you can't do this in executive session. It has to be done in open session, but the Attorney General's Office has ruled that you could put together a survey, say, and electronically collect the data and bring the data to joint meeting, or whatever, however you're going to do this.
So, right now, I'm trying to, I sent out last week a note to the superintendents asking if anybody has that in a, in a Google Forms type of thing, so it can be tallied easily and organized easily. Or any one of those kind of things, because it's really, you can do the four-page thing. I'm not sure how, it has to fall within the guidelines of DESI. The way I've looked at it was, this year was an interim year and I'm really starting next year. So, that's how I personally kind of looked at it.
Well, this could inform next year's goals and everything, which is.
And so, I was trying to create something that would be straightforward, that's user-friendly as well. You know what I mean, like, because you don't have to look at every single standard and every single indicator in order to give feedback, you know, and, because I agree, you know, I want feedback too of areas.
Yeah, it's good to know what's going on.
Of areas of growth and that kind of stuff. So, that's where I am right now, trying to figure out how to create that.
Would the collaborative be helpful in having some electronic format?
I, they're part of my, you know, chain, so I haven't heard anything back from anybody, so I gotta go.
Let me ask at the virtual school, because I believe that's how the board of trustees did me last year.
I did not ask them, yeah.
I think it was a Google Form, what we just doubled.
Just to recreate it, because I started, I actually, I actually start, I started to build it myself, and then about 30 minutes in, I was like, this is going to take me a week. Let me go see before I re-vend the wheel.
Let me ask, I actually have a meeting with the current executive director tomorrow afternoon. So, let me ask when I'm there, how they did it last year. I believe it was a Google Form, and if so, I can probably grab a copy of it.
The more simple, the more simpler, everybody would.
Simple the process is.
The more simple the process, the more people we're going to do it.
Yes, the more people you'll get.
The more confusing it is.
I agree.
And I'm one of those type people sometimes, more confusing, I just like, because like you were, you were saying earlier, like, you start a meeting, it's just, I have no idea, I have no idea. It's like, there's going to be questions that the average school committee member is not going to know because they're not, like, being chairs.
You know.
Makes, makes a difference, because we're, we're, we're talking to a lot of other people being chairs, where Maureen is a school committee member, and she's not talking to various weekly, or, or Louise Law, or something like that. You're going to do the ones that you know, so how do you, how do you, so what happens to the blank ones? How does it get scored? And, you know, all these things, and sometimes.
I mean, I'm not looking for a score per se, I'm just looking for the spirit of like, what's going well, what's not going well, and let's make sure we're all on the same page, so then it leads to more effective governance going forward.
Right, and I, I am fine, my approach on this is to not get spend, my only concern on this is spending countless hours creating, creating.
Forms that people aren't going to fill out.
Creating information to be evaluated on. And instead of, I don't mind, you know, you know, even when I was principal, we used to hand out note cards to everybody and say, write, you know, write what's going well, write what you give constructive criticism, whatever, and then turn them back in.
That's all we need to know.
And we go through them and that kind of stuff, just as a, just to talk about different issues and that kind of stuff. And I also know it's an open process, and listen, it, my problem is, my concern from where we sit as a district is it's very unruly in the sense of, because we have five different districts. You know, how are things, you know, how are things weighted? How are things, you know, one school might be running, you know, and so how are, and then how do you collect all that information in a way where, not just my own time, but if you have the chairs spending, if you're spending 20 hours together to put this together, to tell me you're proficient. You know what I mean? It's kind of like, could we have spent those 20 hours on something else? When if I'm not proficient, I'm going to be, it's pretty clear in these meetings when things aren't going well.
We could have spent those 20 hours on your planning. My planning committee.
But, but there's, there's some truth to that, and so that's where, I guess that's where I'm coming, that's where my, kind of is like, would, how do we, I want to do this in a way that is efficient, we get the feedback that's necessary, we get the scoring that's necessary for the state, but it doesn't, you know, how can we do it? And I think electronically to start, then.
And then, I think you have to lean on the chairs to pull it together and, well, and I feel like the.
Another thing you might want to think about, which is allowable, is extrapolating based on your district's strategic plan what standards and indicators are going to be the ones of focus and not worry about ranking all of them.
Right.
But doing it more strategically.
Focus on the few that.
Doing it strategically, I can remember as a superintendent doing that, passing that off to the principals. They sort of did the same thing, and then we did the same thing for teachers. So, that not everybody is looking at every standard indicator and element for everything, because it is impossible.
Right, and I think some of the frustration that I saw in years past, and this is over not just with Dr. Carey, but with Marty and even with Regina, was that, so here's standard one, and then I provide you with.
Oh, yeah.
This is standard one, and these are all the things that we're doing in this. So, you read through it, and if you believe it, you know what I mean? Or you have to go get information outside of that. And it's that, that's the part, the system I want to modify or make it more user-friendly. Like, I, you know, I want, you know, I do, you know, I do want feedback, I mean, you know, criticism, constructive criticism hopefully. But I don't want to say, here's what I'm doing, and then people say, oh, yeah. But also, at the same time, I'm going to have to remind people.
Right.
You know what I mean, like this.
Justify it.
You know, because I do have to say, there is a lot of things that are going on that sometimes people don't realize. But, so, my hope is to, at the June meeting, have some sort of online forum to start. I think it's kind of an educational process to start with for this year's evaluation, just kind of looking through those indicators, getting people to read through, kind of doing general overview, and there's a general comment section where people can kind of give their, their thoughts. Then, next year, next year would be a more formal system, because I'll have to have superintendent goals that go.
Right, then.
Hopefully, they're going to tie in with the strategic plan. They will, I mean, hopefully, they will tie in with the strategic plan, and they also will tie into the school improvement plan, so that's kind of, so that when you see those plans and we're making progress in those plans, then I'm doing what I'm supposed to keep doing.
Right.
Hopefully.
Which is what I fully anticipate. Hey, Lily. So, I just want to make sure that we're staying on top of the evaluation and that we're not, again, burdening, overburdening everybody, but keeping it, I mean, that is one of our main responsibilities.
It is, it is.
To evaluate you.
And I think maybe next year, if the chairs be willing to do it, we need to create a subcommittee to go through it.
Yeah, I mean, I think you lean on the chairs to do it.
Or the chairs do it.
Why not let them represent their committees and bring to their voices?
Right.
I remember one year with Regina, one year or two years, I was chair at both Frontier and Union 38. So, I had to get all this information from all the chairs, try to figure it out, and then meet, you know, and it's, it's tough because you may have one town that doesn't like them because he didn't agree with something, but the other three towns have no problem, and that's the problem with sometimes with evaluation. Instead of doing it honestly, what exactly, they'll, they'll, they'll do something different to, a black, you know, have a black eye on something, and it's not, and it's not true, I mean.
But that doesn't have to mean the whole score is bad. I think that's, again, just feedback that you should know that that town isn't happy with what they're happening.
Well, there's a double, I mean, you have to look at, evaluation is not, because the way my contract is written and such.
Right, it doesn't really impact anything in terms of.
If I'm not doing a good job.
You can let you go.
You'll move me along, you'll either let me know, and then you'll move me along. That's the way, you don't see superintendents battling out, saying, you know, you gave me proficient last year, needs improvement this year, you have to legally, you know, whatever, it's, you know.
It's pretty cut and dry.
I have a, a pretty, unless, unless you give me, unless I get feedback that needs improvement, or.
Unsatisfactory.
Unsatisfactory across the board, then it could be used for dismissal. But any superintendent worth their whatever is going to leave before that, that gets out.
Yeah, hopefully.
God forbid any of this happens. But the, the other side is that there is a problem with that, another, just another thing, I added on the list of things that my, my, I have to take care of, is that our regional agreement is not very clear on what happens. And so, let's say, you know.
Two towns love you.
Let's say, you know, let's say the fictitious sixth town that I'm working for does not, you know, let's say I do a poor job. Let's say I put, you know, make decisions that put in, you know, people into, you know, legal jeopardy or whatever, that kind of stuff, and they say, we want that, there's no, right now, it doesn't, there's no language that says how the voting has to work.
Right.
You know what I mean? And so, if there is a split.
Legal vote doesn't work in, in the case of.
No, there's no agreement, there's no.
There's no, there's nothing in the agreement that talks about hiring and firing the superintendent. And that's why it's always been important that, when we go through the process, that, you know, it's been a unanimous vote, you know, at that stage, you know, if, if there were one that go grounds for removal, what is it? A majority vote? Is it a weighted vote? You know, is it each, does each committee get one vote? Or does it, you know, you only have three people on this committee.
Hey, we don't have much of a vote.
So, that kind of thing, however dear feel it would say, we're 50% of the population, what's, what's our level of vote? And so, those are all things that, it's on my, it's on my grander list.
That should be on your goals.
Well, it's on my grander list of looking at the regional agreement and also talking about, not regionalization per se, but how we can mainstream more things. I'm kind of saying that from the beginning, but I just have to get some breathing room.
And I'm not saying everything else that gets done right, but this is how you help ban and.
Yeah, you're here for a long time.
But the, but the evaluation system does allow a way to give feedback.
Yeah.
Every member, every member a voice in the feedback.
For you to share what you're thinking and what you would like also.
And it's not just, because I do hear from the chairs a lot more than other people, it does allow people that I don't talk to quite frequently, basically, because there's 25 people. Like I said, if I have, have our conversation with each member a week, it would be half a week.
That's all you would do.
I think, I think for this year, your evaluation was that you were hired.
There is some truth to that, yeah.
I mean, I had to earn.
Right, 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 right.
Earn his job while he was in that job.
And again, my point is that evaluations are not all like doom and gloom. It's more like, this is a way to keep moving towards the same goals and make sure that we're all on the same page.
And as Judy said, that's the open process.
Which they're awful, but.
It's fine, and I, and I get it. My concern is, again, is not the, the feedback and such, it's the, how much, how much has to be put into creating it.
Works well for.
And there's so many in the other pots on the stove that I don't want, want to make sure we do it to a, we need to.
Well, the end result needs to be something usable.
Right, and honestly, I'd rather you focus on giving evaluations to your team, and the teachers get their evaluations, because that's where it starts, sort of, from the bottom up, but.
But I've seen situations where that you get so bogged down in the process that.
Right, you lose sight of what it's really for.
Truly useful comes out of the.
Right, and that, I'm not trying to accomplish that.
Right. Okay, so, we'll keep moving. We'll keep that on the agenda next week, next week, next one as well.
Oh, and then I added the update on central office staff changes, because I'm just, I am mindful that the central office expenses per week are fairly sizable, and I always want to take the opportunity when we can to look at, are there ways to save money in any way? And I know Kim, Kim has become, which isn't the right way to say that, but.
Yes.
Kim has been promoted to the Director of Elementary Curriculum, is that the title?
Director of Education.
Education.
The one in front of us.
And so, that means her position will be open. So, I'm just curious what the thinking is there, and how, if there's any opportunity to maybe make some savings?
So, well, there'll be, we talk about savings, are you talking about, that position is necessary.
Okay.
You know, to have somebody overseeing the early childhood program is a necessary position. So, right now, it's, it's posted, and there's a committee together to screen candidates.
Does it need to be quite as senior a position? Or could it be a position that reports into Kim, since she knows that job pretty well at this point? That maybe is less money? I don't know, I'm just trying to think of how to, you know, stretch the dollars a little further and/or build in some succession planning, potentially.
Okay.
So, I, maybe it's a little late in the game, but it's just important to, you know, it's like, although curriculum directors is 49, $50,000 in our budget. And I'm not saying they're not important, but I just want, I want to be mindful, we have a principal, we have a superintendent, we have a curriculum director, we have technology director, we have a lot of support, and I don't know if we need quite everybody at the highest levels, like, maybe there's some more. So, we could use that money for, you know, earlier in their careers, learning, building, I don't know. Just some ideas to think about.
All right.
And I know early education is important, and clearly, we're making a priority of preschool, so, you know, do you do some sort of lead like you did with the nurses? Or you have a lead person that helps coordinate across all the schools and gets some extra for that?
That'd be really tricky to do if you were also teaching in the classroom.
Yeah.
You know, I can, I can, I can have the conversation.
Because these all report into you?
Because, yeah.
That's the other thing, like, you have to manage everybody and do their evaluation.
Well, there's a lot of people, yeah, there's a lot of people that do report into me, and that's, again.
It's challenging. It's challenging.
You know, and that's, you know, there's no assistant superintendent, but I, I am, I do use the curriculum directors like superintendents, and as far as it goes for curriculum and instruction, you know, they haven't been used that way for HR and those kind of things. Although I do have discussions with them to, to, that kind of thing.
It's just that rare, these positions open up rarely, and so you rarely have the chance to restructure, and so that's why I'm sort of making a point of looking at it carefully right now, you know, Louise was there thirty years, which is great, but it doesn't give you the chance to change things around easily, if you want to, so, I would just encourage you to think about what, what else you might want to be accomplishing.
With those positions.
Because getting new positions is really hard.
Right.
And if you have open positions, that's generally difficult to make changes.
Question about these new positions that come up in the school, are they contracted year to year? Is it a contract structure around like the principals?
Their contract is similar to the principals'.
Okay, are we still gonna use like new wordings, like we came?
All contracts moving forward are gonna have the, the stop gaps of the, you know, we, we talked about.
The buyouts.
And more buyouts of sick days, restrictions on vacation, whatever, all those other things that have been put in the last.
Correct me if I'm wrong, did you say something Louise was gonna structure her, her buyout around, or?
I don't have, I don't have any details on that, so.
Because I know that she was, she plus a few other people have a, a few buybacks that's gonna cost.
Mm, that's gonna hit us.
A lot of money, I mean, I say a lot of money, it's, it's a lot of money.
Spent your whole year.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we should look forward to, for how are we gonna budget it? Where are we gonna get the money, you know, all the time, where are we, where are we gonna get it all from and stuff, so, it just, just a simple, not a simple question.
Budget surplus.
Well, I mean, to get back to the thirty-four thousand blessed gym or busted gym.
We planned for that, we did in FY twenty, so there's, there's a holding spot.
But there's also, we're talking about, if we have extra money, we just appropriated twenty thousand dollars warrant item to do some floors, what do we got left after we do those floors, and how many does it have?
You can only use it, you can only use it on what you say you're gonna use it for.
Well, I understand that, but we also have thirty-four thousand less the gym floor that we're gonna have at, towards the end of the year.
Yeah.
Could that take care of another, could that take care of the library or something like that, that's on your list of floors to be done, that's.
Right, well, that's what we were.
I should have asked that earlier.
Right, but going, taking a step back, it's a balance between the two, because we also, what we can do is take some of the school, try to bring forward some more of that school's choice surplus, so that we are in a more comfortable spot next year. That was kind of, that's what I was kind of saying, maybe you do a third, a third for, you know, I guess we call it capital expenses, and then, and then maybe the two thirds go to extending the budget with that floor, so you have a little bit more savings bringing forward, so we're not in a tight spot next year.
And which ultimately helps the town, so they don't have to put more money back in, if we, if our school choice gets defeated.
And we keep our school, our, our general budget low on increase next year, and then, and then try to do, you know, you know, that's that balancing out, getting capital projects from, from the town.
Capital budget.
Yeah.
Christie, can you find after the, the twenty thousand is spent on what we're gonna be doing with that, what do we have left for floors that we need to be done in the future to give us an idea, whether you would know how much it'll be, or how many more rooms we gotta do, and, you know.
A lot.
We did, we did a bunch.
That's, that's, that's exactly.
That's the capital plan.
That's exactly, that's exactly.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure in the long term, you know, are we going after another warrant article for twenty thousand next year? To do more of the following, you know, the following year and stuff like that, I'm just trying to, when you say a lot, we've already done some, and we're gonna be doing more, so I'm not sure how many of the lots are that you're talking about, as I say.
How many rooms still have carpet? That's how it's gonna have to be, I'm just gonna go. So, but there is, there is gonna be another round of carpet, because basically the carpet is, all the carpet was put in at the same time, but staggering replacing it.
And we're basically putting tile down with some throw rugs on, or not throw rugs, or whatever they call it on top.
Good.
Yeah, we had only done like three the last time, right, so that's, there's quite a bit left to do.
Right, there's still a couple more years of rotating those, but that's exactly where we were talking about the capital plan, like, we kind of know it, it's written down, Bob has this listed out, but we, we should be able to pull it up and see, well, next year is grades.
Right, you shouldn't have to re, redisess it every time to know, like, that should just be laid out.
And that should be part of our, if it's a, if it's a capital plan through a warrant item, article, making sure we have our paperwork in when we're supposed to have it in, you know, by a deadline or something like that.
Because then we'll know exactly what's coming up.
Man, I gotta say, I love the way the, way this capital group worked, I mean, the fact they came in here, they looked at everything, you know, they were very, they were very curious.
That was the first time they did that.
It was the first time, I wish, you know, I'm gonna try to push other towns to do as well, just because it was, it was just nice communication, they saw the whole building.
Yeah, I'm glad they came to the school.
Right, they know what they're talking about.
And then we talked, and they talked about other issues.
Better.
And they talked about issues that were solved in the past, they were talking about issues that may come up, it was just a nice conversation. I felt, I felt like we really heard, and they were really caring about the building, you know, so, I wanted to get together.
Clear communication.
Yeah, and so.
So, speaking of Bob, how's, what about his position? So you said he's, Ed, do we know anything?
Yes.
Can we go about it?
It's on my, it's on my superintendent report, but the, so.
More than I believe, so what?
So Bob, oh, yeah, we'll go for it, so Bob is, last day is early August, so, so, yeah, so it is posted as of yesterday, and so, the interview thing is, I have it posted for this month, starting June one is the close, and then we're gonna see what we have. The Bob's position is, I think, is, has changed slightly from someone who was really hands-on on a lot of projects to really overseeing a lot of projects, and so that's really what that facilities director looks like now, especially with the amount of, the amount of capital projects that are happening, and each of the buildings has also gone up, as, each of the buildings have gotten older the last ten years since Bob's been out. There've been new buildings in the last ten years, so, you know, that, that position, you know, very detailed job description on, on the school spring with that right now.
Hopefully, we'll get some good candidates.
Do you think that's a straightforward bill, or it'd be hard to find someone, or?
I don't know, I don't know, it's an interesting.
I think there's a lot of qualified people that know the regs.
It's a good job for somebody that.
It may, it may be a very good job for a, obviously, a second career type, and I'm not saying it could be a first career too, but.
Right.
But in the sense of.
Someone has experience.
Someone that has experience, you know, with knowledge of different trades, and, you know, working with contractors and that kind of thing, I mean, you have, you have excellent healthcare.
That's right.
I mean, you have to say, it's a good benefit for, you know, a lot of people working in trades don't have the healthcare, they, they're paying out of pocket for it, so. You know, I don't know, I think it's a, I think it's a, I don't say it's a fun job, but it's a, a bit.
For somebody.
To me, I like, I, I think it's a fun job in the sense of that there's a lot going on, you're constantly, you're, every day's different, new projects. I guess that Bob's probably laughing right now, he's watching, saying, yeah, two, at two in the morning when I'm called in because of something, it's not, it's not a fun job, but.
Is school spring the right?
Rewarding job, how's that?
Rewarding, yes.
Is school spring, spring the right spot?
Oh, we're gonna post in the paper as well, but school spring is the easiest way to.
I didn't know if tradespeople would be looking on a website.
So we'll post in the paper, and it says, please apply there, please, please apply to the school spring thing, quite frankly, this, this position will also require that you have, you know, basic computer skills for the amount of, you know, corresponding and communication we have to do, so. They can also apply.
And he's also, the new person's gonna work with Bob for a period of time too.
Yeah, we're working on, we're seeing, we're seeing, the problem is that we have, we have several overlapped people, and the problem is that they cost more money. So we gotta kind of just be careful, because we're already now, as you guys know, because you're at the joint meeting, sorry, over there, but there's a new business manager who's been doing overlapping time, and we're trying to extend that more.
When is she gonna start?
We're working on doing some days in June, and then we have the full month of July as an overlap, so, you know, that's actually what I'm working on today, is what day we're going to do, so she's got approval from her position to kind of a mix to help them with their payroll during their month of June, and then also do some line boarding, and you and I met yesterday and talked about areas, and she can help over with that transition, so, but again, you're paying two budgets at the same time, it's important, it's important, but at the same time, some of the budgets are tight.
Can I make a suggestion that we do executive session, so Maureen's part of it before she?
I have five minutes.
Okay. Do you wanna?
That's fine.
You wanna do that?
You can get the overview in the first five minutes of what we're talking about, I can, if we go to executive session now, I can give you, before you walk out the door.
Whatever works.
I'll make a motion.
It's on page two.
Yeah, because we can do.
Executive session, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, paragraph two, deduct strategy session prepared negotiation, non-union personnel to collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
You know what, then say you're also gonna do MGL thirty-one A.
Three, to discuss strategy respect to collective bargaining litigation is an open, if an open meeting, excuse me, open meeting may have a terrible effect on bargaining and litigation position of a public body and the chair so declare.
So basically, you're going for both non-union and union.
Okay, are you coming back to open session? You just have to say that as part of. And then we'll return to the open session.
And for reports at start.
The final reports.
You have to do roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes, Maureen, Katie, yes? Okay, welcome back. So, I lost my agenda, but we're on to the updates, I believe.
Yes.
So I don't have any further update.
So the report's the capital projects, so, we did have town meeting, and they did approve.
Right, all our nice projects.
Didn't, well, not all, they did the carpet.
Carpets, the air conditioning.
AC.
Yeah, well, all we really asked for, I think.
Um, we didn't get the.
The tables. We didn't ask for.
We didn't ask for the tables, but the AC in the kitchen was not approved.
For this year?
For this year, so, it's been brought in, so, yeah, got those, those things going, so we'll get moving on those.
How many, how many mini splits are we do getting for fifteen thousand dollars, and where are they going, Christie?
They said two.
There'll be two.
Oh, two, okay, I saw.
So one for each of the offices there, and then the.
Are there air conditioners in there already? Will those go somewhere else?
They're window units.
Window unit.
And so that becomes.
They nearly fit in those type.
And they're, they're, they're at the end of their, they're at the end of their lives, whether or not they could be used somewhere else, you know, the problem is, they become a security issue, because you just push, they'd be screwed in and that kind of stuff, they're not installed properly, you know. So we'll get those done, please. So that's the capital.
I don't have any other update, Maureen isn't here.
Principal.
Principal.
Um, so, you stole my thunder at the beginning with your thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm calling you.
So I would like to thank the members of the school committee, the select board, finance committee, residents of Whately, and superintendent Modesto for supporting the school in preparing and improving our nice budget, it'll provide a great school experience for all our kids next year, and then also into the future. And in the way of appreciation, this is educator appreciation week, and I'd like to thank all of the staff at Whately Elementary School. I consider everyone who works in this building to be a piece of the education that goes on here, so we're all educators. Thank them for their devotion to our students and their dedication to providing them with the best possible school experience, and I would like to thank the PTO for thanking the, the staff, they have planned a whole week of treats for our staff members, and that's really, it's, it's really great, I think, you know, a lot of it is food, and it's, it's a great way to show people that you really do care, the way that parents step up around here to show their appreciation, it's remarkable. We completed ELAM pass last week, and it ran more smoothly than anything I had anticipated. I had planned for all of the pitfalls I was accustomed to, and there, there were none. I also kept a close eye on how our students were handling the pressure of taking the test, particularly our third graders, since it's their first time, and I think because of the way that it was framed by the, the staff, kids, you know, put, put their best effort into it, but no one seemed to be suffering from undue stress, and so that was, that was important. We had an ad in the newspaper this past weekend, a couple newspapers, The Recorder and The Gazette, and Valley Kids. We still have a few school choice spots, so anyone who wants to come in and take a tour, or fill out a packet, is encouraged to do so. We will be awarding those spots on May twentieth, this is what the color copy of the ad looked like. In the newspaper, it looked like this, so. But the, the person at the, the Gazette or The Recorder said it was the nicest ad they had ever seen. For school choice.
Very good, very good. It is very appealing picture.
Well, we.
In color.
Use your imagination.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Nope, gearing up for the end of the year.
Oh, on the back, there's like many, many dates and things that are coming up.
Right, not much time left.
There, there is not. It's amazing how fast it comes up, and it feels this year even more of a surprise, because we're getting on the fourteenth. I don't think I remember ever getting out that early.
All those cursing of the principal, I mean, the superintendent on those snow days that weren't called, I'll take those cards.
Now you're a hero.
Now people are thanking you.
I have, the seniors invited me to a fundraiser, has something to do with like squirting water, and they wanna squirt me, because there was only two snow days. Because I don't have to make up the snow days, you know, and so, I'm not.
Um, one thing that's on here.
Their favorite superintendent.
On June thirteenth, we'll be having our family picnic, so.
Oh, that's nice, that's a new thing.
Well, it used to be combined with field day.
Okay.
And we are separating the two, field day's gonna be a little earlier than usual this year, and we felt like having a family picnic on that second to last day of school would be great, so, Bob, we'd love you to come, and, and Judy, you can come as well, the, I'm assuming the other two will be here.
I'll be there.
As moms, that's a big day for you, because.
It's great for my last graduation.
Graduation is that night.
The other day I signed, I'm not sure how many, there were a hundred and something diplomas I signed, and I autographed the other day for the diplomas at Frontier, so it's like, wow, sit there.
It's real, yeah.
Poor kid with a W in his last name. Even read your hand during the.
Okay, thank you, Christie.
All right, superintendent's report, the, again, starting overview where we are with negotiations, Frontier is close, I, I'd say completing, but we're working on the final approval of the contract, but the negotiation meetings are over. So we're just waiting on the, the final approval of each side. The union, those are the, just the ongoing, the meetings that we've had, and then the tentative dates that haven't been formally scheduled, we'll be doing those at our meeting on Thursday, the dates coming up, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, some of the things we talked about, but Kim McCarthy is the new director of education, and we currently have a committee looking for an early childhood position, and I'll come back to the committee with more information about that position, I think that's some of our, as I was thinking about after we talked about, is just really showing what that person does, and so we can see if we're gonna scale it differently, we're already moving in one direction, but we, still it's worth having a conversation. Shelly Pareda was also, since our last meeting, at the joint meeting, was voted in as the next business manager for the FY twenty year, Bob Lesko's announced his retirement, and we'll be, reposted his position. And we'll be doing that interview scheduled in June, so this one is a new thing that just came out hot off the press, is the, Desia's come out with a new interpretation of, and there's a separate handout regarding it, that regional school districts, students in the elementaries do not get an automatic placement in the regional school district, starting next year. What does that mean? Is that we have to, A, communicate that with school choice families, and two, that they will have to apply for school choice at Frontier. This may be a, it may not have a major impact unless there, unless the grades are close to being full. There have been years that middle school at Frontier, we had to close off school choice enrollment, and then they would have to go to a lottery system for all students applying in, so, we've always taken them automatically, and then opened up more school choice slots after that, what this would create is that we'd have to, all students moving up, so there's probably about ten in each class or so, based on our, maybe a little bit more, probably about fifteen in each class, moving up to Frontier, that's all the four schools combined. They automatically get in, and then we have, you know, five or so spots, that's basically what we have, we take those students in, there has been a few years, in the last few years, where we've had to close school choice in middle school, to keep under the hundred and twenty number, which allows us to keep our sections at no larger than twenty, from twenty-two to twenty-four. So that would create them to have. So that would create them to have to go into a full poll and that kind of thing, so, that's fresh off the-
Do siblings get a priority or anything?
Yes.
Over, so that's still-
That would happen, yeah.
So, so this is true for any school system that is participating in school choice?
Any school system as part of, they're just changing, I mean, when you look, take a step back and you look at it, there's, does make some sense, in the sense that you're leaving what is legally one school system and you're going to what is legally a separate school system. We may regionalize and be able to do so, they kind of buddy with that, but it, to, to change those kind of things, but because we're considered a part of a different system, you have to reapply for school choice.
So like Northampton, they don't have to do that because they're all one district?
Correct.
But Amherst does because Amherst is-
Amherst does.
Concerns, does that give people pause?
Well, might-
It could create, I mean-
On our-
Might come here to try and get into the high school.
Correct, you know, there's, well, there's some people that like the full system, they like the full system, right.
They want their kids to stay with the group of kids they're going with, yeah.
Right. You know, and that will be something that we'll have to look at when we look at numbers. The numbers are coming down, enrollment overall in the district is down a little bit in the elementaries, so, though it's kind of a spike again in the lower grades, but in the next groups that are coming through where we can see about the number they're going to high school where it may not affect.
Yeah, Frontier has a lot of spots right now, right, or?
Well, yeah, not, not the middle school.
Not the middle school.
And what happens at the middle schools, they come in at seventh grade and eighth grade, after eighth grade, some of these kids will go on to tech, so we lose that group of kids.
That's basis based.
And some of those may be school choice kids too that we may, we may lose, so we'd be looking for, sometimes for people for that ninth grade for school choice.
Our seventh grade class, usually the incoming class from the, we'll call it from the district, from all four towns, is around, is around a hundred and thirty students in this, in the, in the sixth grade class. And then, by the time they go to seventh grade, there's also a drop off, there's some people choose private schools and some people choose, you know, choose charter schools and then some people, maybe if they choiced into their district, they want to go back, you know, they may go back to their own, their own middle school depending on, you know, it's a, you know, whatever. So you lose about, we lose about ten to twelve students there, so we're, we come in around a hundred and twenty. A hundred and twenty, we can have the number of sections that we have of balanced classes without going over number twenty-four. We try not to go over twenty-four due to science classes and science labs and that kind of stuff, but, and so then we cap it at one-twenty and then if you get any new students, we just, new students from the district, they obviously, they go. So, if the sixth grade class, and then at eighth grade, so we get a hundred, so then we have, let's say we have a hundred and twenty students, we lose between fifteen and twenty students going into high school, because tech will take about fifteen and then you have about five students going to just private high schools such as DA, we have like two or three that go to DA, a couple of Northfield, you know, that kind of thing, and so then you lose a couple there, so then our class size has always been around a hundred. So that's kind of the, the formula there. So, you know, we'll have to look at it because we can, you know, we'll have to look at what the, the size of the classes are coming up for the next, you know, three or four years and if that number is down, then the school choice thing's not going to be an issue, it'll be a lottery and everybody gets in, you know what I mean? Or we don't have to do a lottery, we have enough space, enough spaces, and so.
But I think you're right, there is a connection, like as the mark, we think about the marketing of the district, either we become one district, in which case then it's not an issue, or we have to keep-
State's going to have to kick, kick in a lot of money if, if they want to do K through twelve for, for regionalization because it's going to cost a small fortune for the four towns to do something like that. I mean, there's a lot of things involved, not only salaries and insurances, it's, it's probably the biggest is insurance and the salaries.
Salaries, insurances, making the adjustment there.
Making it all the same, yeah.